At this time, I would like to call the Stanley County Board of Education meeting on January the 4th, 2022, to order. Welcome to those of you that are here in attendance, to those that might be joining us via live streaming. We appreciate you being here. At this time, let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for your many blessings, for bringing us into the start of the 2022 New Year and for the potential that it holds. Thank you, Lord, for our Stanley County School faculty, staff, our parents, and our students. Father, there are many in our communities that are facing illnesses and the loss of loved ones. Lord, please provide peace, comfort, and healing to these hurting families during these difficult times. I ask now that you give us wisdom and guidance as we enter into our board meeting. In your name we pray. Amen. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session for Personnel
Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Section A6; Student Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Section A1; Attorney/Client Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Section A3. Could I have a motion, please, to go into closed session?
Make a motion when going to closed session.
A motion by Ms. Poplin. Could I have a second? Second by Ms. Watson. All in favor of going into closed session, say aye. Opposed, no. The board at this time is in closed session. I would like to call the board back into open session. Once again, welcome to all of you that are here in attendance and to those that may be joining us via live stream. We appreciate you being here. Board members, at this time, I am requesting that we amend the agenda to allow public comments to be placed before the consent agenda and to add a presentation on the Test to Stay Plan by Dr. Dennis after our committee reports. It will replace number eight. So could I please have a motion to move our public comments before the consent agenda and to place the Test to Stay Plan by Dr. Dennis as our number eight?
Make a motion to move the public comment to the beginning of the agenda and place the Test to Stay at section eight.
Thank you. So a motion by Ms. Poplin. Could I have a second, please? A second by Ms. Watson. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? No. So the motion carries. So at this time on the agenda, will be recognitions. I'm going to turn this over to you, Dr. Dennis.
What I would like to do today is have two types of recognitions. The first recognition is for high graduation rate for two of our high schools. I have a letter here from State Superintendent Truitt and Chairman of the State Board of Education, Eric Davis. He says, "Dear Superintendent Dennis, congratulations to you and your staff for achieving commendable graduation results at one or more of your district's high schools for the class of 2021. Ensuring that every student who starts ninth grade finishes with a diploma and well-prepared for the challenges of college or career is one of the highest goals that our state and nation strive to achieve. And enclosed, we have recognition from Department of Public Instruction and State Board of Education of the accomplishments by these students, educators, especially during this year's difficult challenges." And the first school I'd like to present their certificate to is the Stanley Early College High School, and they had a graduation rate of 100%. The second is one of our comprehensive high schools, South Stanley High School, for an outstanding graduation rate of 95.9%. And there was not a representative tonight for logistical reasons. The last thing is I have the Silver Bell Award. I would like to recognize the Stanley County Schools Board of Education, and this is presented from the North Carolina School Board Association for Training Excellence and Commitment during the 2021 North Carolina School Board Association Academy Year of the North Carolina School Association Academy of School Board Memberships. Congratulations, guys.
I appreciate all of you and the training that we are always having and conferences that we attend. We just finished training right before we came in here today, a training from four to six, and then we have more training coming up on January 11th. So this is commendable, and thank you, board members, for all that you do. At this time, we will have our public comments. I actually have three people that are signed up. And I just ask that when you come and address the board, you have three minutes each. If you will please state your name, your address, please, and just be mindful of your three minutes that you have. So the first person that signed up to address the board is Mr. Joshua Ballinger.
My name is Joshua Ballinger. I live at 530 Meadow Rock Drive. That's in Albemarle. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I would like to start by thanking you for amending the agenda to hear from the community first. Again, thank you. My name is Joshua Ballinger. I'm new to the community, coming from Charlotte. I'm a retired U.S. Army infantryman that holds a degree in emergency management and disaster relief and all FEMA certifications up to Level 800. I'm here to speak to you about the mask mandate and the new COVID policies that are to be implemented into Stanley County schools. I'm here to directly put before you statistics from the CDC that show the new policy is lacking merit and is not science-based. Quarantine guidelines for return-to-school work, not up to date with all recommended COVID-19 vaccinations for their age, and one of the persons was not masked, automatically five days out of school. Up to date with all recommended COVID-19 vaccinations for their age. No exclusion from school if there's no symptoms, even though they can still spread it. You've just got to wear a mask. The CDC published a study on December 17th of this year that breaks down the acquisition rates of the Omicron variant, that is making up an approximate 70% of all COVID cases in the country right now. This was referencing the first 43 cases that occurred in the United States. The population was spread out across the United States with different demographics to include travel statuses before becoming ill. The statistics break down to 79%. Almost four out of five of the first 43 known cases were fully vaccinated. Yet, the school system is putting in place a policy that adversely affects unvaccinated students. I would like to know how this policy can be explained, knowing what the CDC is posting about this variant. Has there been a study that suggests that an asymptomatic, unvaccinated child is more likely to spread the virus than an asymptomatic, vaccinated child? I've not found one, and really would be interested in that data set. We were told that we should follow the science. It seems that this policy is not following the science, but yet the board is stating that their hands are tied because they could go against the state, possibly lose funding, funds that shouldn't have been taken in the first place with the non-monetary requirement that was attached. I'm also interested in how Union County School Board has the freedoms to push back against these policies that are not based on science, being that we have the same legal representation. Hey, I know that a majority of you are not up for election this year. Two out of five are. And be thankful that you're not. But I assure you that if you continue this non-science-based track of implementation of policy, the parents won't forget when it becomes 2024. And it's not just the parents. You can look at the latest COVID-19 dashboard that was published. What is the percentage of fully vaccinated population across this county? A majority of them are not. And when you put these vaccination policies in place, you're going against about 58% of the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ballinger. Our next person signed up is Ms. Julian Fallon.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am Julian Fallon, and I'm the principal at North Stanley High School. And I wanted to start off today by saying I want to thank all of the hard-working people in Stanley County Schools for everything they're doing every day for our kids. There's a lot of wonderful things going on. And at the last board meeting, Melvin Poole recognized Hope Miller for her wonderful help, and I thought that was a great way to start the new year, for us to come up here as employees and to thank somebody else who's been doing wonderful things in our community. And so my first person that I would like to recognize is Tim Hatley for all of his hard work and dedication to Stanley County Schools over the years. I personally have been affected positively by his efforts as a parent, as a teacher, and now an administrator. So I just wanted to say thank you to him for that. Mr. Hatley.
Thank you, Ms. Fallon and Mr. Tim Hatley. Our next speaker is Mr. Levi Green.
Madam Chair, board, I didn't actually know I was going to be talking tonight until just a few minutes ago, so you'll have to bear with me. I'll be brief. I do want to say thank you for the improvement in communication that we've all witnessed this evening and at the last meeting. It's very welcome, very well-received. I want to talk, I filled out my topic this evening on courage, and I wanted to speak briefly about that. You guys made a decision back in October to remove the mask requirement from our children, and I want to talk about the very positive benefit that that had on so many children. It doesn't take much more than driving up to a school and looking at a playground to see the kids running around smiling, happy, when you pick your kids up, to know that that was an extremely positive change for the children. We've seen children begin to eat again, that were having appetite issues, not to mention various other situations with emotions, their ability to communicate. Lots of positive changes happened in October. For those of you who are Christians, hopefully you'll know from your Bible that the phrase "fear not" is mentioned something like 365 times in Scripture. It's a very important part of Christianity. For those that are not, I think it's still a healthy way to live, not having fear of things that you can't control. When it comes to our kids, the risk to our children from this virus that we've been talking about for almost three years now, we're in our third year now, is virtually nonexistent. The data backs that up. And I just want to encourage you to continue down the path of reason, down the path of looking at the most vulnerable members of our society versus the group of people who don't have any say in what happens to them, our children. So it's a balancing act, and I get it. I want to ask you, will you be on the side of freedom and autonomy and parental choice and the ability of parents to raise their family and work with their children as they see fit? Or will you be on the side of child abuse, the side where we saw children hurting, children unable to engage? I'm not asking you that question to put you in a bind, but I am asking you to consider your quarantine policies and any future mask decisions and make those decisions with the welfare of the children in mind. Please don't quarantine healthy kids. Thank you for your time.
Next, board members, is the approval of the minutes from the December 7th, 2021 Regular Board Meeting and the continuance of our mask optional mandate. Dr. Dennis, do you have any information or numbers?
The latest, excuse me. What I just received, number of student positives, and again, this is just for a couple days of school. In the last five days, it was 96. Number of staff positives in the last five days is 28. Students currently isolated or quarantined is 200, and staff isolated and quarantined is 52. And from the DHHS website, the NC positivity rate is currently 29.7, with Stanley County's rate at 16.
Okay, board members, I know that this falls under our consent agenda. I also know that Dr. Dennis is going to be presenting a new plan to us. So therefore, I feel that at this time, I would like to have the motion to approve the December 7th, 2021 Regular Board Meeting and the continuance of our mask optional mandate. Could I please have a motion?
A motion that we approve the minutes for the December 7th Regular Meeting and continue the mask optional mandate.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Poplin. I have a second.
A second.
Okay, I have a second by Mr. Leisk and by Mr. Graves. Okay, all, or Dr. Lefler. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Then our consent agenda has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, on our agenda, our committee reports. And those of you here in the audience, as well as those at home, you'll be able to see that as we have started a new year, we have different people that are heading up our committees from the past. So first of all, Dr. Lefler is chairing our facilities. Dr. Lefler, do you have a report?
I don't have a report of anything new, but over the next several months, we're going to have more committee meetings and look at our facilities, because a lot of our buildings are more than 100 years old, and we need to look and see what we need to do for the future. Also, we've got a lot of people moving into the community, so we're going to have some facility issues that we're not going to have enough rooms. So we're going to have kind of vigorous, over the next several months, look over this plan and look at the plan we have over the next five, 10, 15, and 20 years. So we'll be getting back to you on that.
Thank you. I like developing that five, 10, 15, 20, 25-year plan. Mr. Dustin Leisk is chairing the Finance Committee. Do you have a report at this time?
Yeah, real brief. Anthony, Mr. Anthony Graves, Mrs. Vicky Watson, and myself are going to serve on the Finance Committee for this calendar year. We have a lot of needs of the school system, facilities, as Mr. Dr. Lefler mentioned, curriculum, employee pay, and really just if we go back and look at the audited report from December, really attracting and retaining students. So we're, over the next coming few months, going to be in deep discussions with Mr. Dudney, our superintendent, the county commissioners, on addressing some of these needs and how we're going to plan for the longer term. Just as a quick update, Mr. Dudney mentioned in the December meeting about North Carolina recently passing their budget. So this month, the certified personnel or all state employees will receive their $1,500 bonus for making, if you earned less than $75,000. If you earn more than that, you'll earn a bonus of $1,000. Effectively, all state employees will receive a 5% raise. Two and a half percent of that's backdated to July the 1st, and another 2.5% starting this next fiscal year on July the 1st, 2022. Teachers will, part of the budget for low-wealth counties, receive teacher pay supplements increase. I think the average, and maybe Mr. Dudney could speak to that, is around just under $3,000 for our county. Don't quote me, it can vary by teacher, but that definitely will help. And you can see Section 7 and 39 in the state budget, if you'd like to read more about it. And then for our non-certified personnel, they will move to $15 per hour or the minimum of the higher of that, or a 2.5% raise effective July the 1st of 2022. For this fiscal year, it's backdated the same way, 13 bucks an hour, the higher of that, or 2.5% raise. Thank you.
Thank you for that update, and I know that as board members, we are certainly keeping up with this, Mr. Leisk, and I'm glad that you are on this as well. Mr. Bill Sorenson is going to be chairing our Curriculum and Instructional Committee. So do you have anything at this time, Mr. Sorenson?
Nothing to report at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. I am very happy that Mr. Sorenson is chairing our committee. He served on the committee with us when I was chairing the committee, and we really have some great things going. And thank you, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis, for that. So anyway, we look forward to what you bring before us, Mr. Sorenson. We have a new committee. I haven't even spoken that much with Anthony Graves, who's going to be chairing this for us, but it is a committee that has been needed. And I know that right now, Mr. Graves is not feeling well, and he is joining us by phone. But, Mr. Graves, you are chairing the Marketing, Community Engagement, and Safety Committee. Do you want to say anything?
Yeah, I just had a quick comment. Thank you very much. I want to say, I was going to save this for my any comments, but I think that this is a continuation of your commitment to putting the community first and making sure that every voice is heard, and I really appreciated you putting this committee together. And I think everything you've done since you've taken over as chair has been a positive move in this direction, and so I'm excited that you've given me the opportunity to chair this new committee, and I think it's going to yield very positive results in this coming year. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. I look forward to sitting down with you, and there is, well, we have talked about it before, the need for this, and I think you're the right person to chair this, so I am looking forward to that. Thank you. We have Ms. Vicky Watson, who is chairing our Personnel Committee. Do you have a report, Ms. Watson?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And then we have Ms. Carla Poplin. I wanted to keep her on policy, bless her heart, because she has an enormous amount of work to do, but once you start understanding all these policies, it seems to, I guess I want to say, come easier to you. But then I have put some people on that Policy Committee with her that, well, they just know they're going to have to have a lot of time, too. Who is that? That's Mr. Sorenson?
Mr. Leisk. Anyone policy? Okay. No, personal.
Oh, it's Ms. Watson. So the three of you, and all with policy. But anyway, okay, I think you have something for us, as always, Ms. Poplin.
I do. I have, if y'all bear with me, I have a few things to read, but per a conversation with the Madam Chairwoman, we will be pulling two policies that were in the packet for final approval tonight, and that will be Policy 2302 and 2310 to readdress at our work session on January the 11th. So if you'll just note that, and then I will go ahead and read the rest that are for final approval tonight. Policy 1310, parental involvement; 1510, school safety; 1720, Title IX, non-discrimination; 1725, Title IX, sexual harassment; Policy 1726, Title IX, sexual harassment grievance; Policy 2125, confidential information; 3100, curriculum development; 3225, technology responsible use; 3410, testing assessment; 3420, student promotion accountability; 3460, graduation requirements; 4050, children of military families; 4120, domicile residence requirements; 4150, student assignment; 4152, unsafe school choice transfer; 4300, student behavior policies; 4320, non-bullying and harassing behavior; 4400, attendance; 4700, student records; and 4720, student surveys. And these are for final approval, so we'll need a motion.
Okay, all of you have had 30 days or more, really, to look over these policies. So at this time, board, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the policies that are listed there that Ms. Poplin just read out to you.
Just minus the 23.
Yeah, minus the 2302 and 2310. I wanted to pull those because I want to have a little more discussion on those at our upcoming work session. So with pulling those, may I have a motion to approve the policies that were listed?
I make a motion to approve the policies listed.
Okay, a motion to approve by Mr. Leisk. Could I have a second? Second by Ms. Watson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, so these policies have been approved. Next, I would like to call on Dr. Dennis to present to the board the new Test to Stay I recognize that many of you, I know we've had information, you've had a chance to look over and read information about this. I know Dr. Dennis has been involved in many calls about this, so I'm just going to turn it over to you to give us a presentation.
Well, again, this came at the last minute, but it's timely, so... Excuse me, apologize. It came at the last minute, so it's timely, and I'll do the best I can to explain this, and please feel free to ask some questions. But Stanley County, or Stanley County Schools specifically... But Stanley County, or Stanley County Schools specifically, has an opportunity to enroll in a test to stay research study. And the research study is through Duke University. And it's, you have to consent to it, you know, by family, by students. So it's, you know, it's 100% or, you know, participation. You know, no one's going to be made to do anything, but I'll just go through this real quick. So the test to stay survey permits students and staff to stay in school following a known COVID exposure. The updates are considered under the new guidance from the CDC and the Strong, excuse me, Strong Schools Toolkit, which I'll get to in a minute. And the participant must be agreed to wear a mask in accordance with the Strong Schools Toolkit that was dated the most recent update in 1230. So here's how it works. If you are a consenting participant, you are permitted to stay in school and you receive three tests. So say you said you're exposed, you, on day one, you test. If you test negative, you stay in school. Take another test on day three, as long as it's negative, you stay in school. And on day three, or excuse me, on five or later, you would take a third test. If the day five falls on the weekend, you would just take it on the ensuing Monday or Tuesday, whatever that first day is back. And as long as you're negative, you stay in school. Students are not permitted to participate, and I'm going under the voluntary masking district. There are different rules if you are a mandatory mask district. So since we're a voluntary masking district, students are not permitted to participate in athletics or extracurriculars until after day five. And of course, you'd have to be negative after day five. You would have to wear the mask to remain negative on COVID-19, be asymptomatic, and continue to, excuse me. Yeah, and continue to wear it until that 10 days. And that again goes with the, this five days and five days from the Strong Schools Toolkit. Students and staff that enroll may attend field trips and school-sponsored activities. To be eligible for the study, participants must have the ability to receive at least two of the tests. If needed, tests can occur on days four, or five, or five or six following exposure. The only difference is if you're household or congregate living exposures, you are excluded from the enrollment because they cannot prove when you were actually exposed to COVID. And if a participant develops symptoms, and they need to isolate at home and follow the testing requirements outlined by the Strong Schools Toolkit. And as far as what our end is, they give us free testing. All the kits are sent to us in testing. They do the training of the people who would do the tests, which we'll use our health assistance as we have been tested so far. Again, as for students and staff. And the only data we need to provide them is we'll take the data we receive. We'll make it so it's anonymous. We'll code it a certain way so they don't know who it is. And they just want to know about the testing cycle. You know, did they test all the way through, did they become positive? And they use those numbers, and they send that information to the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. And that's how they start making decisions on testing and quarantining. And in this case, test to stay research. And so, and again, I will say that it's 100% up to whomever if they want to participate. If they don't, they can still use the same quarantine measures of Strong Schools Toolkit. That's just a quick breakdown of the pilot.
Board members, I'm going to let you speak to everything and get into a question or discussion about this. I was, I've been reading about this. And then I am friends with one or two other board chairs in surrounding counties that are participating in this. They are working with their health alliance. And of course, I think you told me that our health director, David Jenkins, is going to be working with us in this as well, which that is, that is good. I'm glad to hear that. And it truly, what I have learned from Chair, Chairman, Chairwomen surrounding counties is that you will see a drastic reduction of children that are going to have to go home that are asymptomatic. And they have to be home quarantined when they should be in school. And they need to be in school. So I think this Board is looking at something here that is very proactive. We're trying our best, because our number one goal, we want to educate our children. We want our children in school. So, you know, anyone that serves on this Board, that is your, that is your goal, to educate our children. And so we've come through many, many things here. And so I'm going to start with calling on, going, going down this direction. I'm going to call on Ms. Poplin first. If there's anything that anyone needs to know about Ms. Poplin. If you ever want to know who researches everything with a fine-tooth comb, that's Ms. Poplin, because she's joined in on conversations about this. She's joined in on phone conversations, and she will find your information. So Ms. Poplin, what can you add, or what questions do you have?
I would just like to start with, for me, the whole masking issue, even way back in August, was keeping our kids in the classroom because we knew for 18 months that our kids were not learning effectively remotely. So for me, that was the big issue in the very beginning, and still continues to be the issue today. We know that our students need to be face to face, and they need to be learning in the classroom with their peers as much as possible. And just the beast of quarantine in itself keeps some of our students who are not positive and do not end up turning positive out of the classroom because of the quarantine. And when this came along, I jumped head in because I wanted to see if this would be beneficial. And it seems like it would be. I just really want to stress a few points that I think a lot of the community and the public will have questions about. It is 100% optional. You have to opt in to test to stay. So nobody's just going to blindly test your child at school for anything without, there's a form that you actually fill out that's sent in. So nobody's just going to test a child out of nowhere. The only things that will be compiled and turned in are the type of things that we're already reporting on our dashboard, the number of positives, whether it was, you know, how, how the positive came about, symptom data, and then just throughout the testing period, whether the said student becomes positive or not. There will be an average, I guess, of three tests, because they'll test on day one, day three, and then day five if possible. Dr. Dennis did mention that that fifth day could possibly be like a Saturday or a Sunday. So it would be the following Monday. So it could be possibly day six, day seven, depending on, you know, what day their tests align with. Let's see. The tests are at no cost to the school system, so we're not having to pay out for that. So that was another huge point. I just, I feel like a lot of our students have been trapped by multiple quarantines. And what this would mean is, you know, if Johnny's sitting beside Sally, and Sally is positive, and Johnny opts in to test to stay and never tests positive, he doesn't miss a day of school. He will have to wear the mask because he was exposed for the 10 days, just like it states in the Strong Tools, Strong Tools School Kit, or Strong Schools Toolkit, which you have to do with the five-day quarantine anyway. You're quarantined for five days, and then you have to wear the mask for five days following the quarantine per the new toolkit that came out on the 30th. So it's not, the masking and the quarantining is not any different with the test to stay. You just can be in a seat at school instead of at home. Hopefully, that makes sense.
Those are great points that I, that I wanted you to bring out. Another great point or question I was going to ask, no one's making money, correct? I mean, we're not, we're not paying for any, any of this. So, you know, I thought that may be some question that someone asked, how much is Stanley County Schools going to have to pay for this? We're not paying anything. Ms. Watson, do you have any questions concerning this?
Any questions, but I think what I've read of this, I think it's going to be a good thing for us. We're going to keep our kids in school instead of them going home to be quarantined. And it's coming from Duke University, which is a very highly thought-of university. And I think that's a good thing for us.
Thank you. Mr. Sorenson?
Yeah, I read through the material pretty thoroughly myself. And the bottom line is the data is in, the research is in. And it's horrible what's happened to our kids that were remote schooled for an entire year, and also kids that have been quarantined multiple times. Learning loss is a disability that we can prevent. If we can stop, if we can stop so many kids being out of school, we're saving their future. So I'm not, you know, I'm not easy to get along with on about anything. But if this will keep some kids in school, I'm all for it.
Thank you. Let me start the other direction. Mr. Graves, I'm not sure if you've been able to read up on some things.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, you've heard, so you have some comments?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I would like to encourage people, if you'd like to get some more information, to go to clinicaltrials.gov. As Ms. Watson noted, the sponsor of this clinical, this is an official clinical trial. It's sponsored by Duke University. And one of the things that I think everyone that's been paying attention to the mask mandate has tried to focus on is data. And we haven't had a lot of data. And so I was, first of all, very encouraged. And I welcome any opportunity to gather more data so that we can make better decisions. And this is voluntary. But if you go to clinicaltrials.gov, or if you go to Google and type in clinical trials and test to stay, you can read up about the program. And it's very, very interesting. So for those of you who know, there's some folks in, in attendance at the meeting there in person that are, that are data people, and even people that are watching this stream over YouTube. I think you guys will be impressed by at least the outline of this program. And I'm looking forward to see what the results are. So thank you for that.
Yes, I want to make, and you made a good point, Mr. Graves. They did say, when we were there, they were, we are on a very early end of this study. They've already had one iteration, we're in the second iteration. They did let a couple of districts test right before Christmas, but that data's going to get thrown out. They were just trying to be nice to keep the kids in school. But now we're starting the second iteration, and it is a horizontal study. And they're looking for a lot of tertiary data without going into, you know, getting too scientific about it. So this is kind of a new thing.
I can put that anywhere we're thinking on that. Before, several of us on the Board, and I think everyone on the Board wants to keep the students in school. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to push for testing. Because if a student was asymptomatic, obviously, we don't want to have kids quarantined if they were exposed, but they were never going to contract COVID, or, or they were never going to become symptomatic. This is the kind of data that will help us be able, again, to prove the impact of exposure with real numbers. So I think it's great, and so thank you again.
And Mr. Graves, just so you know, they did say that the first batch of data will be out like mid-February.
Yeah, it'll be available to the public. And, but I do know, I know it's anecdotal, and it's not exactly, you know, empirical at this juncture. But speaking with two of the local superintendents who were in the first iteration of this study, said that it was, it did keep kids in class, that it was effective.
Thank you, Mr. Graves, Ms. Poplin there, Dr. Dennis. Mr. Lysk, do you have some comments or questions?
Thank you. I did look at it, and I've looked at Union County as well. And Union County's communication says masks are optional on UCPS for students and staff. However, persons who are impacted by a positive case or quarantine should follow the guidelines in the toolkit, which requires a mask for exposed people after five days. That sends them home for five days. That is for someone that's just exposed and possibly tested negative. So what this study can do, and, and again, before I say that, I went back and looked at our numbers. I'm a numbers guy. So from August to December, 83% of our quarantined students did one of two things. They didn't test, or they tested negative. This is a way we can get eight out of 10 students in the school. If you're in Union County, because I know that that's referred to a lot, if they're not doing this, per their guidance, they're going to be following the toolkit. So exposures and symptoms will be out of school. They'll also be wearing a mask. So I feel like that this is a great option. This is a great option for the Board to explore. It gives parents choice. You don't have to participate in it. But our goal is to educate kids and keep kids in school.
Thank you for that. I'm glad that you're that numbers guy and can point that out. Dr. Leffler?
Yes. Before Christmas, this came up. Chairman Gibson, she mentioned this. And I think it's very appropriate that Dr. Dennis, he really got on it. Because they were just offering it mostly to the big counties. And I had the fear that we would be left out because we weren't a big medical center or anything like that. But Dr. Dennis got on the phone and called some people and got us enrolled, which is very good. And the whole time with the mask and everything, we've done it all to keep the students in class. Because with this, if you don't do this, and you're exposed, you're going to have to be out of school at least five to seven days. With this, you stay in school the whole time as long as you test negative. That's why it's important to have the students do it. I know there's been a lot of people say, and articles, this way and that way on masks. But being out of school and the loss of learning is a lot more detrimental than wearing masks, a mask, for 10 days. So the public, really considerate with your students to do this because, number one, we're getting the test. You can't get the test over the whole country. But they do have a supply test, and we will have the test supplied by the state, which is good. And I think it's a very positive thing for our school community to have our students in class. And this COVID, over the next two to three weeks, is even going to be worse. We might even have to close a few schools if we lose our personnel, our teachers, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers. So I think this is a very positive thing that we're offering. You don't have to do it. But I think it's very helpful to our district, our students, and our whole community. And I just commend Dr. Dennis for getting on top of this and getting everything going. I think it's a, will be a great thing for our community.
Thank you. I'm hearing lots of positives. One thing I wanted to clarify is Dr. Dennis has not enrolled us in anything at this point because I wanted to bring this before the Board. I want this to be a Board decision. It's not Dr. Dennis's decision, it's not my decision. This is a Board decision. I'm going to call on Ms. Poplin again. I really want to go back over, I want everyone who's here to hear again the facts, the factual pertinent information about this.
I just want to, I don't know if I said, this is for staff and students. So a staff person could also test to stay, which we have not been able to have. And that was something that I'm glad Dr. Leffler mentioned because when we do have these quarantines, most of the time, the reason we have to shut a grade level or shutter a school due to COVID is because we don't have the staff to cover. It's not because we've got, you know, a cluster of students out. It's because we have a number of staff, we just cannot fill those positions. So for a staff person to be able to mask for 10 days and test to stay would be huge. So it is for students and staff. It is for outside COVID exposure, outside of the home and school exposure. So if you just got exposed in the community, like at a birthday party or something, you could also test to stay. It's not just a classroom exposure, which is a big thing. Like they've said, I know back at Christmas time, some of the students were very upset because they were missing out on little, little field trips and activities. Things, your child could test to stay and wear the mask and still participate in the activities that are happening in the classroom. I know that was a big thing for some parents. And I just want to reiterate. And I just want to reiterate, a lot of the issues we've been hearing lately aren't about our students who are positive. It's about the students who are having to continually be out.
Quarantine.
On the quarantine. And so this, this test to stay would allow those students, with parental consent, to test on day one, day three, and day five. And as long as they are not symptomatic and do not test positive, they can stay in school. Does anybody have a question they want to ask at this time?
Can I ask a question? There's one question.
I have a quick question, and maybe just.
Okay, Mr. Graves.
That was another board member. Do we know what kind of tests? Well, I think I haven't been able to find out, or maybe I missed it.
Is the.
What kind of tests are they going to give us?
Quintal test?
Quintal test?
Quintal test, yes.
Okay. Thanks. I missed it.
But it is, is quick, rapid test.
Correct.
So that these students, I mean, quickly, you will be able to see.
Yeah, but she said was, there's a consumer or just an over counter, and there's a, there's one that they use in, you know, hospitals and stuff like that, and it's going to be an amalgam of both, just because like everyone else, they're having trouble getting tests. See, it's the same test, just one has a pre-mix solution, and the other one has an extra step where you mix the solution, but the test itself is the same.
And the.
Yes.
Important, and so tonight, I would have been there, but I'm getting over a cold, and I went to go get a test, a rapid test today, so I could bring in a negative COVID test, so that when people heard me, they didn't think, okay, you know, maybe he's bringing COVID into the school board meeting. And so I went to go get a test. I went to the two locations in Albemarle that I could go to. One, I was turned away because they were booked until 10 o'clock tonight. They didn't even have walk-in slots. The other location had walk-in slots and was a four-hour wait, and there's no way I could wait. Now, this is me. I don't work for the school system, and I'm not a student. The thing I like about this program is that with what I had asked for a couple months ago, was an option where we could potentially pay for testing because most insurance companies only pay for one test a month. And so my thought was, if we could get the students tested, and we could at least help cover the cost of that, that that would enable them to get a negative test to stay in school, if we decided as a school board to make that our policy. The problem is getting the test. Even if it was free, you have to have a parent pick a child up, go schedule that test, and so a parent would have to stay out of work to do it, potentially use an entire day of work. It would be almost impossible. So for me, with ultimate flexibility on when I could get tested, I could not get a test today to make it to the meeting tonight. This is an awesome program because it covers, it gets the test into the school, and it just gives us more chances of keeping the students in, the ones that want to participate. So I just thought I should.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Thank you for caring enough about us to not be sitting here, and we didn't know if you had COVID. I know that someone out there about asked a question. May I ask you to do this? Because it may be more than just you. There may be others. I see Mr. Ballinger there writing lots of things or whatever. If you have some questions, could you just please email Dr. Dennis?
Would this be before or after you vote on it?
Well, I think we're, you know, we probably, just to get a clarification with what you may be asking, I think it probably will come after our board meeting, but if you will, you know, if you will email, any of you, anyone, if you will just email if you have questions. My good friends on the Cabarrus County Board, because they're my good friends, and I've kept up because they jumped into this test to stay. They've only been doing it for a short while before, before Christmas. So their numbers, what they've started to see was, it was keeping their kids in school. Now, of course, we've come back from Christmas. So, you know, it's almost like the data that they would have to share with me right now, because of just coming back from Christmas, they, they wouldn't maybe have those numbers. But before, they were noticing that, yeah, it was keeping the kids who are asymptomatic kids that, you know, they never test positive, they're staying in school, and that's what we want, is for our kids to be in school. The other thing that I wanted to point out, again, this is, this is optional. There may be people who might say, I don't want my child tested, and that's, that is that parent's choice if they do not want that child tested. And so with this is, you have to opt in. You have to have that consent to do this. And so any of that would be, we're wanting to make sure we clarify right now before someone, you know, were to say, they're going to be testing every child in Stanley County. That is, that is not true. So this is, this is a way to test and keep your children, students, in school as long as they do not test positive. Ms. Poplin, you have something?
I was just going to say, the local health department is also on board with this.
Yes, Dr. Jenkins, or Mr. Jenkins is on board, which is a great thing because I know even with my good friends in Cabarrus, they've worked very closely with their health alliances as well. Is there, before I, before I ask, and we take a vote on things, board members, is there anyone else that has a comment to make? I appreciate your discussion. So we've, we've heard from Dr. Dennis about the test to stay plan. We need to take action on this if the board so chooses to enable Dr. Dennis to move forward with this test to stay plan in a timely fashion. I want us to get started in this. So therefore, what is the pleasure of the board? Is it to move forward? So I need to know, what is the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we move forward with the test to stay program.
Okay, I have a motion by Dr. Lefler. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Ms. Poplin has seconded it. Is any more discussion at this time? Anything else? Everyone that is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you. This passes, so Dr. Dennis, we are certainly instructing you to get on, you know, get things going.
Yeah, I'll make the study available.
Okay, great. Thank you. At this time, is curriculum and instruction, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis, do you have something for us?
I do not have anything to say.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here.
Absolutely.
And I'm still interested in everything that we got going on, so thank, thank you. Next is auxiliary services, Mr. Terry Dudney.
Okay, good evening. First on the agenda, we have our surplus sale items. In your packet, you should see the list. There's roughly about six vehicles that are, have not been in service for quite a while, and so we're wanting to actually surplus those six vehicles, and they will be on the govdeals.com auction site at your approval tonight.
So you need the board to approve putting these?
Yes.
In surplus, or?
Yes.
Okay. So I need a recommendation then, or a motion from the board?
I'm making a motion that we put the six vehicles on the not in service list.
Okay. Ms. Poplin has made a motion. I need a second. I have a second by Mr. Thorinson. All in favor, please say aye. Oppose, no. Okay, so Mr. Dudney, that has passed to, that those buses not in service.
Okay, I'll pass that along to, to Mr. Bowers for him to proceed with that with govdeals.com. The next item I have under auxiliary services is concerning the personal leave. If you've sort of reiterated some of the items that I discussed back in December, in the new budget law, the personal leave that we know it as in the past, where teachers could take personal leave with a $50 doc to offset the cost of substitute teachers, has gone away, effective November the 18th, which was the sign of the bill into law. So at this point in time, now it's our decision as a local board to decide, first of all, if we are going to charge teachers for a personal leave with, way the law states is that they have to have a reasoning to actually take personal leave, and then if the, if the board chooses to approve that leave, for personal leave, then there will be no deduction for, for that substitute cost. But if, if it does not meet the guidelines of personal leave reasoning approved by the board, then there would be a deduction. So I just want to let you know that we will be discussing that at our January 11th meeting on what you want to do as a board concerning that personal leave. It is a decision to be made by the local LEA Board of Education.
And I would like to ask a question then, and I know you can clarify this at our work session. Who makes that decision? Who grants the, for our teachers if, if personal leave is approved? Is it the administrator of the school?
That will be something that the board will have to decide on what stipulations we have for the reasoning for that personal leave, and then, of course, the immediate supervisor along with Dr. Dennis and personnel would make that protocol for that.
If we're going to make any changes, we've got to create some things.
Yes.
Okay. So you don't need any action?
No.
You're just presenting?
Just want to bring that to y'all's attention, that that will be something that we will need to, as a board, to make a decision on.
Okay.
Okay. And if I could sort of touch base a little bit on some of the things that Mr. Leisk mentioned about bonuses and pay raises. We did get a lot of stuff down to finance officers through the holiday season about how the raises were to be implemented and bonuses for all our staff. There is roughly about five bonuses that is, has a deadline of January 31st of 2022 that has to be paid to our staff. As Mr. Leisk mentioned, there is for all staff that actually are, make less than $75,000 annual salary, and there is, we have to figure what is a annual salary, what we base an annual salary on. Anyone less, making less than $75,000 will actually receive a $1,500 bonus. That's one bonus. Anyone greater than that would receive only $1,000 of it. There's actually a bonus that we have to write a grant for, me and Dr. Blake Lewis mentioned that, talked briefly right before y'all came back into session on that. We have to submit a plan by January 19th on how we're on the teachers and instructional support staff that would receive that $1,000 bonus, and that has to be paid by January 31st. So that could be as much as $2,500 there. There's also a $300 teacher bonus that has to be paid by January 31st for all teachers and instructional support staff if they were employed as of January 1st of 2022. So that could add to that $2,500. And also, there is another $1,000 bonus to all the, new staff, new teachers or instructional support staff that was hired as of January 1st that are still employed as of October 1st. So there's another thousand. So we could have as much as roughly about $3,800 that teachers could see in January, as well as other staff, classified staff could see as much as $1,500 bonus to be paid out in January. All this is money's coming down from the state. It's not anything, it's a local funding stream. We do, in the $1,000 bonus for, that we have to write by January 19th, is if there's staff that's not paid by state funds, whether it be local fund, local teachers paid, or instructional support staff, or federal teachers or instructional support staff, those pots of money has to pay that $1,000. So only, the $1,000 that we'll be writing is only for state-paid instructional staff and, and teachers. So, so there, there is a right smart amount of money. We have since yesterday been called, my staff and I, by several people out in the school system, about what, what kind of money am I going to be getting? I've been told that I've got to change my taxes. I cannot tell them that at this point. All I can tell you, tell them is what I've told you tonight. I had a principal call about 5:30 this afternoon, wanting me to give her an idea of what she could tell her staff tomorrow in the staff meeting that she has. I've told her the same thing I've told y'all tonight. I cannot put it in stone right yet. I mentioned to Dr. Dennis earlier in our meeting this, this afternoon, we are giving to January 31st. Our goal right now, as me and, I'm three people down this week in finance, so as our goal right now for me and my payroll staff, which is two of the individuals besides myself, so I'll probably be doing payroll this month, will be to make sure everybody gets a check on January 25th, which is their normal pay. And of course, and then we will work to have everything else by January 31st. Now, we are have, if we can work like Trojans, we're going to have it all done by January 25th, but I do, we do have to January 31st to get all the bonuses and stuff paid out, and that is, that's in the law. So I just want to bring that to y'all's attention.
Just give him a little grace, because he is down over half his department.
Yeah, yeah, we are. So just, just, yes, please lift us up if you can, because it's, it's, it's been a, it's been a task the last two days.
Yes. Any questions from board members?
Mr. Dudney, as I had asked you right before we came in tonight, will you please let those staff members know where you have attached the W4 form?
Right. In the newsletter that we sent out before Christmas, in both newsletters, in the two weeks of December, it was stated that the W4 and the NC4 form is on our website. We added an additional form today because I had to do some little research that several years ago, the state of North Carolina changed their tax law that everybody would have to be paid, the withholders would be single and zero unless otherwise notified for the employers. Well, they ended up adding a NC4 EZ, and that is for anyone that meets the criteria of his exempt status for the state of North Carolina payroll taxes. So we added that form today on our website as well. I had Ms. Kimery to email all staff, or all schools, the bookkeepers in schools, to let everybody know that now we do have an NCEZ, NC4 EZ form that's been added to the website. Most employees should know where our forms are, but if not, they feel welcome to ask the bookkeepers. All the bookkeepers in schools knows where the finance forms are, that they can receive the W4, the NC4, and the NC4 EZ form. Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
It would help, there were two or three of you, wouldn't it? Next on our agenda is superintendent comments, Dr. Dennis.
You know, glad to be back from the break. I hope everyone had a great break. Had a very good Christmas, so I hope Santa was good to you. And we do have a semester ending, wish, and I know I beat this drum a lot, it could end before Christmas, but it is what it is. It'll be ending here. Next week is testing for most of our schools. Our early colleges have already tested. I don't have the data verified at this moment, but it's coming in rather favorable as opposed to last year. Looks like we made some good improvements, and as soon as I'm able to verify that data and it's, it can be released, I'll let you know. The 17th is Martin Luther King Holiday, and we do have professional days on the 18th and the 19th to be aware of. So that's what's coming up, and of course, you've already mentioned, next Tuesday is the board's work session, and beginning at nine o'clock. So that's all I have.
Okay, board member comments? I'm going to start down here with Mr. Thorinson, please.
You're afraid to say that, aren't you, Ms. Glimms?
No, I was not saying, I did not say anything about.
I will be brave tonight, since we've been here, we've been here quite a while today. Start out by thanking the speakers that came up and spoke. Your, your words don't fall on deaf ears, I hear what you got going on, and I'm about half-deaf, but I heard what's going on. Thank Mr. Ballinger for his service to the country. We do appreciate Ms. Fallon coming. We do appreciate Ms. Fallon commenting, doing something positive. Also want to thank the SEC, the Early College and South Stanley High School faculty and staffs. Graduation rate is huge, it's critical. And according to the Department of Labor, the cost to society for a high school dropout is about a million bucks over the course of their life. And that is in social services and corrections and stuff. So all of our schools are struggling, fighting to keep those kids in school. We need to do the same thing. Right before Christmas break, Dr. Dennis Hi and Dr. Lefler did a little tour of the Southern District. I hope to do the same thing with the Alamo Memorial District here soon, and then north, and then we'll finish up at West Stanley. I got a comment on a couple of things we saw. I taught for 28 years, I know what to look for. I saw 99.99% student engagement in every classroom we visited. That is huge, hey, that's huge. It's the week before Christmas break, these kids should be off the wall. They were in there working hard, and they were doing what they were supposed to do. And I was totally impressed by that. And then there's a lady at Norwood, I had to look up her name, because I'm terrible with names. Ms. Holland's been with the system for over 40 years. What'd y'all think about that? You dedicate your life, 40 years, your life to the school system, you're really dedicating your life to bending the future for 40 years. The Norwood kids were fantastic. We went in there, and they were scared of us, because y'all had suits and the name tag. Going to talk to them a little bit, and they'd opened up. And South Stanley Middle School kids, amazing group of teachers and staff up there. And of course, South Stanley, I'm gonna brag on them no matter what, because that's where I went. But I did see a rookie teacher give a career-level teacher lesson in there, a social studies class. I wanted to stay and see the rest of the lesson. So to me, tonight's about, you know, all positives. And yes, the the test to stay thing, it's not 100% what I would pull for, guys, but it's the best remedy we have in front of us right now. We've got to keep these young'uns in those seats, or they're gonna lose ground. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. Ms. Watson?
I would also like to, the Early College and South Stanley High School, that is so wonderful with graduation rate. And Mr. Ballinger, thank you for your service.
Appreciate you, appreciate you.
The people that spoke today or tonight, thank you for coming, and we do hear everything you say. And next week, just think of our students as they are testing. This is, I think this is gonna be a little harder for them, maybe, because some of them, they've been out so much and everything, but maybe it won't be, I hope not. But just think about them next week. And I just think the staff here at the central office for everything that they do, our principals, everybody in our school system, thank you for all you do for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Ms. Poplin?
I will just go ahead and ditto everything that everyone said about the graduation rate. 100% graduation rate at the Early College. It doesn't get any better than that. You know, I mean, it's the best of the best. And South Stanley was right up there with them, so we're very proud of that. I would like to thank the board for their commitment to the training and taking those courses and sitting through some of those seminars back when COVID. That was a little brutal, but we made it through it. So that was that was nice. I appreciate everybody that came and spoke tonight. Mr. Ballinger, thank you for your service to our country. Ms. Fallon, thank you for coming to share some positive light with us tonight about some of our staff. And your appreciation to Mr. Hatley, we appreciate all that he does, and the rest of our county office staff. And thank you, Mr. Green, for your comments. As Mr. Sorenson said, I don't know that test to stay is a perfect option. I don't know that there is a perfect option with COVID. But it is another option. And I feel like this is what our parents and our community has been begging for, choice and option and a way to keep their children in school more than we have had in the past. And I feel like this gives us that choice. So I'm glad that we are moving forward with this for the folks that decide to opt in. And hopefully, that will really help with our quarantine times and get our kids back face-to-face as much as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. Mr. Leis, oh, Mr. Graves?
Thank you, I will try to keep it brief here. First of all, congratulations, again, to the folks that won the awards earlier tonight, Stanley Early College and Stanley, South Stanley High School. One of the things is part of my life, I've been a business consultant, and I would talk to organizations. And I would stress that performance and outcomes in these organizations are driven by accountability. And you can't have accountability if you don't have participation by the stakeholders. The more people you get involved, the more people that you that know what's going on, the more accountability you have. And so I appreciate Levi coming back for public comments, as well as Mr. Ballinger, because it's people like you and those in attendance and those watching. You're the stakeholders of Stanley County Schools, along with all the parents and the students, the faculty, the staff. And the more people that get involved, the better accountability. And accountability is a two-way street. There are things coming up that Dr. Lefler pointed out, one example, the growth of Stanley County is gonna require some tough decisions, and decisions around funding that Mr. Leis, and I look forward to watching him deal with the finance stuff here. It's it's gonna require, the board is gonna need the help of the public to solve some of the challenges that we're gonna face. And so I'm looking forward to this year. I'm excited about the new committee committees and the committee chairs. And so, thank you, guys. And I'm just, I think it was a very positive meeting, so thank you, Chairman Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Mr. Leis?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll keep it brief as well, and ditto everything everyone else said. Really, I'm just gonna thank Dr. Dennis. I think he does a fantastic job running this school system. He has a tremendous staff that he has put together, tremendous employees that show up every day. COVID is spreading like wildfire, it may be mild symptoms. But as some of the other board members pointed out, it can create staffing issues, as Mr. Dudney has. And as a finance guy, I'm gonna thank him, because I know how tough that job is as a CFO. And so so thank you to the to the entire school system for all that you do. The the power of quarantines lies with the health department, right? So the school system doesn't have that power. And our work session on January 11th will address some of that on how the school system prefers to move forward. But really, at the end of the day, our hands are pretty much tied there. So again, eight out of 10 kids since August sent home, half not tested. About another third or so of that that tested negative. This test to stay option is a great option to keep kids in school. So I hope everyone can rally around that idea. It's a parental choice. It will hopefully keep more staff in school as well. And I think that's a much better option than some of the things that have happened in the past, or just sending, shutting down schools, I think, as as Mr. Dr. Lefler mentioned. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leis. Dr. Lefler?
Also, I'd like to reiterate everything they said. But also, I'd like to thank everybody for a very positive meeting tonight. I mean, a lot of times, we just have a lot of controversy and everything. But all the speakers were well-received, and we hear you all, and we take all of it into consideration. And then this test to stay program is gonna keep more of our students in school. And I would say one of the most important things, the graduation rate was great for the for the two schools. But the people that I want to commend on it are the parents. Because those schools would not have had those graduation rates if they did not have the parents encouraging those students and making sure that they got their assignments and encouraged and encouraged them to go to school. And I just hope the rest of our community can do the same thing for their students and their grandchildren and such as that. I'm really optimistic about this year, because I hope in the next four months, the COVID is gonna calm down some. I'm not sure it's gonna go away for a while, but I I just think we're gonna have a lot better learning environment and that we will have a great year for Stanley County Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Lefler. I know sometimes the chair doesn't give final comments, but I really want to shout out to our teachers for all that they they have to do through, what have we been now? Two, two years, almost, two years in March, and ever-changing, constantly changing. And it's and to our parents, too. I I just, I appreciate everything that they do. Our administrators are here, I see you there, and our county office personnel. And, you know, thank you. The graduation rates, fantastic, South Stanley High School. Mr. Kevin Adams, I always, I always love when I get to come watch those students at the Early College do some final presentations. I hope you invite me again if we get to get to come, it's it's great. I want to take a moment. We lost a student that had been attending West Stanley High School. I actually taught some of those family members. And our hearts go out, our hearts are breaking. And keep them in your prayers. Thank you, Dr. Dennis, for supplying support staff, extra people at West Stanley High School. This family has some hard days ahead as they have the funeral and other things. And so, thank you for that. My family lost a loved one right before Christmas. And I have to say, I've never seen the outpouring of love, the outpouring of love from the southern end of the county. It was all over, but the South Stanley area and Aquadale, the South Stanley middle, it's been amazing. I think it shows us, sometimes we can just put differences, things that divide us. We we put them aside because truly, deep down inside, we love each other. We care about each other. And that's that's what makes all of us great, that's what makes this county great. Thank you, Mr. Ballinger, for your service to our country. Board members, our next regular scheduled meeting will be Tuesday, February 1st, at 7:00 PM in the Jim McIntyre Room. Our board session is planned for next Tuesday, January 11th, beginning at 9:00 AM at the Baden Inn. And again, be prepared, because we will go until we are finished. Something has come up, again, board members here. So I am going to entertain a motion that we return to closed session at this time, please.
I make a motion that we come into closed session?
Motion by Ms. Poplin, a second by Ms. Watson. All in favor, please say aye. Any any opposed, no. The board is backing.